They should have been here all day.
They did not. So let's get rolling.
Well, all the same.
I call this meeting of the Newville Independent School District Board of Trustees to order that the record show that a form of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted according to the Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be available for public viewing. All right, how about a prayer?
Lord, thank you for this evening. We ask for your guidance on the decisions that need to be made tonight, protection over the people in this room and the students that attend Newville. Lord, we ask that all we do, we remember to give glory to you in your name and pray amen.
Amen.
See, we have everybody signed up. We're gonna jump right into it. Uh, we have a donation tab. We don't have any donations. So we have to discuss and take possible action to approve repay to Newton County Tax Overpayers. Judge, I believe, um, we have you on here to tell us a little bit about it.
Yes. Now, it's as far as repaying Newton County, you'll be paying Newton County Tax Assessor Collect. You know, basically the county and the tax assessor and the control of not control of appraisal office is like separate entities. So Newville School District is contracted with the Tax Assessor Office to collect taxes. So, and basically they do the same thing for the county too. So in January, uh, they collected one million, five hundred, pick two thousand. Uh, ninety-one dollars and six four cents. Alright, uh, in February, uh, for the January tax payments, they paid out one million, six hundred twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. And it was a mistake on, uh, the tax collection office. If you'll look, I have, I don't know if y'all have these, but you check, we got the one. Yes, okay. Alright, um, you come down to, it's on the tax collection date.
So, um, I guess where I'm curious, and I don't know if you can answer this, so if you can, it'd be great. So they paid us one point six million.
Yes.
There you go. Newvilleville have great day.
Yes.
And then collections come through and they went, oh shoot, you only got one point five. I, I'm not a mathematician by any means. I just, I'm just, and don't take this the wrong way because I've heard there's some challenges out there. I'm just feeling a little uncomfortable.
Well, basically.
Just saying, hey, here's your sixty-eight thousand dollars based off of the assessor who got it wrong in the first place saying it was wrong. So I'm guessing we've done our due diligence on the back end to confirm. Then you look at it as well. You confirm. It's the same thing. We come in and back into this saying the exact same thing. We've done our due diligence.
Yes.
We're not just basing this on our tax assessor, well, oops, I made a mistake to pay it. So I don't wanna wake up next week and hurl me seventy-five thousand dollars.
Correct. Uh, if you'll look at the check, uh, it's dated one thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, and it's prepared by MJP and signed by Melissa Bart. It's Newville ISD INS collections for one twenty, uh, January twentieth and January twenty-sixth. And it's one eleven thousand, seven hundred, ten dollars, ninety-five cents. Alright? Uh, my next page, uh, you have D I S D M and O collections. It's one twenty through one thirty-one. And what happened, the lady that pays the Newville School District, she was out when, uh, the tax assessor paid one twenty through one twenty-sixth. But when the lady that does the payments for Newville, when she came back, she went to the collection day of two twenty and one thirty-one. So she actually overpaid, uh, for, on the difference on the six days. The six days that they already paid for, she paid it again. Alright, there's a couple of separate checks. On this one right here, there's a check of, uh, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents. Now, everybody thought, well, yeah, the checks match. Why didn't, why didn't somebody catch? But the checks did match. Now, there's three different checks, one for eleven thousand, one for fifty-nine, and then this one here they paid for at six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve. So.
Different dates.
Different dates. And then.
Now, don't they, how often should she balance? Is there somebody that does a balance check here? I mean, I'm, again, I'm not an accountant, but I've played one on TV. Well, I haven't seen her before. I had to balance every day.
Yes. At the time, there was some serious medical issue with tax assessor. She was in and out. I mean, it's, it's so excuse, but some things got.
I know this is the truth, so don't take this the wrong way. What my concern here is, I, I get that someone was sick. When Mark's sick, when I'm sick, we, we still have work that has to be done. And this is pretty important stuff. So I, just because she was sick, and again, Judge, this is, this is my.
This is more than the same coming in, but she overpaid for what, uh, the lady that come back, overpaid for what, uh, the tax assessor paid for one twenty through one twenty-sixth. And then with, uh, the auditor's office has put in places to work. You know, they balance, uh, daily and they're paying out weekly now, so.
Hasn't always been the case?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
They don't balance daily or weekly or monthly or at least six months?
They do monthly. They balance monthly. But now we're, we're.
No, no, I got you. But so they balance monthly. This happened in December, right?
It was happening in January.
January. So we end the tenth month. It took nine months to find out we were out of balance.
Well, they found it in.
Hey, still, I tell them.
It took them a while to find.
We didn't get the report. Do you want to explain what happened? Have I got a report?
So one day she, she got, she was sick. She come back, let's say she come back to be in sick. Alright, so now she's balancing and she looked at it and she went, oh shoot, I missed this thing. Cause I've been out for five months. And she's trying to write this wrong. And I'm, I'm still struggling.
She was in and out for two or three weeks on January, February. She had some health issues and, uh, was struggling.
Yeah, I struggle with it as a, as a board member because we, we got sixty-eight thousand dollars. We're not a rich school by any means. That's, that's a lit. Somebody's gonna go out something over this thing. And I, I know there's no, oh, heads need to roll over. I'm not going there. Something needs to be adjusted. This is big money for us. This is a huge, it's a grand, a salary, right? That we assume, we base off the dollars that we've received, we're gonna go do X, Y, Z. And now all of a sudden, I gotta cut back sixty-eight grand. And I'm okay with us saying we're gonna balance daily, but before that, we were balancing monthly and it still took us five months to find out, for her to find out.
Yes. And we weren't aware of it till July, June. That's when, like, she went to the auditor's office and told him she had a problem.
And we have been requesting the reports for six months.
Ma'am?
I'm the auditor and we have been requesting them, uh, the reports from the county Tax Assessor Office for six months.
See, I'm just digging a flag for me. I, that's the frustration. Again, not just as a board member who, who has to figure out where to figure out sixty-eight thousand dollars and who we're gonna cut out. But as a taxpayer, that's, mom, I live in Newville. I live in Newton County. I always lived in Newton County.
Yes. And, and, and as far as the, I didn't know the reports were not coming in. You know, they sent the reports to the auditor's office.
Who does the, who does she answer? Who does that role answer to? This is a tax assessor.
Yes, would you, this is our, uh, this is Missy's watch it. She's our attorney.
Very nice to meet y'all. And I'm, I'm the school board in Newton, so I feel, I feel, I feel good. The Tax Assessor Collector is her own elected official. Um, she is not supervised by anybody but, or, oh, or, or she isn't, nobody oversees her except, uh, she doesn't answer to anybody but her constituents. Um, that's how any elected official is. Now, she, her whole responsibility, aside from state, uh, taxes that she takes in for, uh, vehicle registration and stuff like that, is to collect property tax on behalf of the county. Then in addition, she can contract with other entities to collect their taxes. So she is contracted with Newville ISD to collect their taxes. So the relationship is between.
Do we pay her to do that? Is that something we pay for or is that just kind of a side menu?
Yeah, and that I have no idea. Um, I haven't seen the contract myself. Um, so the relationship is between Newville ISD and Melissa as the tax assessor. Um, the relationship is it between Newville ISD and Newton County. So I just wanna make that. It's just how the, the system is set up. Um, when she collects taxes on behalf of the county, on behalf of Newville ISD, on behalf of each, um, emergency service district, she's personally liable for that money because she's the only one who has it. She puts it in a tax account. It's at her discretion. Uh, she is personally responsible for that money until she disperses it to each entity. Um, so the situation that we're in is that she dispersed money to Newville ISD in error. And now she doesn't, and at one, at some point she discovered that she didn't have enough money to cover the disbursements. Uh, and what happened was that she had enough money in the next month that it already been collected and that she was, that's how she was paying.
Not getting it wrong here, they follow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's gonna catch up.
Yeah. Um, so, and, and eventually it did catch up. She came to me. She told me, hey, there's not enough money in the tax account. I don't know what happened. I don't know what's wrong. And I said, well, I'm not an accountant either and there's no way I can look at it and find out. We need to have somebody who can figure it out. I suggested she go to our auditor's office and that's when the investigation began. And the auditor's office was ultimately the one, uh, the people that found exactly where that missing money was.
Does the auditor's office work with her regularly, regularly? Is there a requirement that they take a peek at her stuff on a regular basis or just, did she ask for help?
So, so the auditor's office is responsible for, um, looking out for the best interest of Newton County. So their, so their, um, duty is to Newton County. And they monitor her reports. They monitor her as a county office, you know, her expenditures and things like that. But as far as the tax collection, they monitor the tax collection for Newton County. Does that make sense?
So no, they don't, they don't have to necessarily. It's not a requirement that they do a weekly, monthly, quarterly.
It's not a requirement.
But it's prudent because they can make such a.
Well, no, I would think that's an audit in order to say, it's, it's, it's cheap part of all of it anyway.
Absolutely.
Sounds as though, uh, as an elected official, there's only a certain amount you can do until the next election, so.
I have an answer to your question. Janay responded, um, we do pay for services three hundred thousand.
Ma'am?
Three hundred thousand. That's what Janay said. She's on her way, but she had to her birthday. So she's like, no more.
We pay her three hundred thousand?
That is what Janay said. Well, yeah. I said, do we pay the tax assessor for services at all? She said, yes.
Can she just take that out of what we owe? I know it sounds funny, but I'm saying, why wouldn't we take that out of what? Let's work out our payment plan.
I think it's a tax appraisal district. You see y'all pay.
No, I think two, but I, I seem like I remember once upon a time was having a similar conversation. We didn't pay her something. Uh, or that entity something. I don't know that it goes over the pocket per se. Um, I think it's more of the draw or for appraisal district.
I know, we just, we just kind of, what's it? Yeah, that's not less than the income.
We did, we have something for D I S D that's not.
Yeah, we're for achievements red. It's a collector of the prizer.
Collecting for the appraisal business? You know what it does.
I'm proud doing my best.
I don't know that we've got a check for it, but I think when we square up, isn't it like a fee we pay? We gotta make sure we're paying for the entity.
Well, we pay the appraisal. What was our portion?
Our last six hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
We run that ten hundred out and then the problem between the school district and the E S Ds, so they all pay a portion of, you know, even less than Curbsville School District, Brooklyn School District, City of Newton. So there was all these different entities that paid the appraisal. So in Newville, it was three hundred and fifty-six thousand something. So I do remember.
I don't know. I guess we had a lot of other conversations to have around, do we stay status quo in the situation we're in or something? We talked it properly. Do you, you know, we probably all, or maybe you guys need to have that conversation. If we, are we, is this a direction we need to continue and how do we not end up here again?
I'd like to.
Have a lot of confidence that we're not avoid it. If, if she's unchecked on a regular, I just hate that. I'm not pointing at her. If that office is, is pretty much doing what it's gonna do on a regular basis, uh, and it's going unchecked, I don't know how in the structure we have today, make sure that we don't end up here again.
Well, from this point going forward, the, the auditor's office, which is reconciling office on a daily basis and the payments, you know, on a weekly basis. So, you know, God forbid this ever happens again, you know, so I don't have.
Yes, and, and that's what I want to say too. Our office does monitor her reports on a monthly basis. We, we have been on the Tax Assessor, uh, the Tax Assessor Office for the back reports whenever she went to Misty that day. I mean, we have been asking her, sending emails saying, we need your reports, we need your reports, cause they, and our books are called agency ones because she has a home checking account. Any kind of county accounts, we monitor like daily, but on those, we monitor monthly. Now we, I have Dawn in my office and she is monitoring daily, every in and out, everything. So I can assure you that this will not happen again as the county auditor. It will not happen again because I have someone full-time monitoring yours, all the E S Ds, all of them. Because I truly apologize if this has happened to begin with and it's not even our responsibility. But it is, as we, on the title of Newton County, I'm just apologizing that this.
I don't, I don't understand the structure. I, I know in any other organizations that I've ever been plugged into, especially when you talk about the dollars that are going through people's hand, you normally have a handful of folks who are responsible. You know, me and our, our teams or whoever else, and very stringent guidelines on how they manage and what they do, right? Cause listen, you got one person, that, nobody's perfect. You just can't, it's a lot. Um, so you need help, but, um, I don't know. Maybe we just need to take the real folks look. We, it's my understanding that we're one of the last districts that are still structured open as well. Or any, I think a lot of the other entities are going straight through, um, the appraisal district, right?
They are.
And maybe we need to look to see if that's the right thing.
Yeah, I think that's some discussion.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. I will, let's, if, if you can, Freddie, if you can, you and Janay can visit, y'all figure out, tell us what y'all think is the smart thing. It, it may be the same. If you're good with the, where the, um, auditors are and where everybody's at, maybe that's okay too. I mean, I'm, I don't have, I don't know enough about it to really have an opinion of. Now, around that check piece, my understanding is, as it's structured right now, we're not, we can't receive another dime of money until we repay the sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, they sent you money yesterday. I wasn't coming out of the county today.
Just since the ones law. They were asking the county to, basically, uh, if they could withhold the payments.
Yeah, there was nineteen thousand dollars paid yesterday to, to Newville ISD. Now, Newton County has not been able to receive any money for the last since July's payment.
But basically on their, on their software, they use Heps, um, with the month of July not being closed down, um, it would not let them receive it. Or without authorization from commission court. And legally, they did not have authorization to like, hey, you don't have to pay that. That's his payment, everybody else. Legally, we had no responsibility to do it because they were contracted with different entities. So basically as court, we took no action. It all worked out.
So.
No, no, I, I.
It's just a odd situation structurally with regard to what, yeah, what, what the county can do. Yeah, cause you've got a county elected official, but there are parts of her job that are not tied to Newton County entity. They are independent.
Well, according to Luke, my, my thoughts is that there's a significant amount of money that goes to these people's hands. We are not doing something to overlook it and we can go six months before we realize we've overpaid somebody sixty-eight thousand dollars? That seems to be a bit much to me. And, and, and again, it would have hurt if you'd have told us a month later, probably. I'm assuming Janay would be ticked about that just as well, but six months later, five months later, I mean, we just spin it and going on and figuring out what we're gonna do next, right?
Well, it was actually probably more five months. When they started to investigate, hey, where's the money? Where is this one at? You know, and it took, what, three, four weeks for you to go through all the numbers?
Everything because like I said, we need to get the reports in the time there and.
To me, if you can't get a report, I, it seems that, that's something you would either, I call a judge, FBI, I don't know, dude. Somebody's hiding something. I don't give a damn report. Not surprising if you're up at sixty-eight grand. I don't know any other way.
Yeah, the whole thing is we can't get our elected official. They have pretty much.
But when we don't pay our taxes, they're, they're gonna start to find letters. I mean, I mean, I'm not saying. I mean, you're one day late. You're getting all this interest tax on it. So what about the interest, you know?
Yeah.
I was saying, if we owed her money, a bit the other way around.
She owed us money?
Yeah.
Yeah, we owe five, eight, nine taxes.
We do owe her money. For her. And again, that's where the other heartburn is. If y'all are sure, cause I don't trust anything coming down just yet. Until we can get the right amount of money paid for for a few months in a row anyways, I'm still not more than trusting. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna take y'all's word at it that you guys in the audit group has kind of stepped up, right? You said you guys are going to step up, kind of overlooking and I would have hoped there's something that in the event she don't supply you what you need, somebody to call to say, Judge or whoever, I don't, call me, I'll call. A tax, just go taxpayer, I.
Yeah, well, that's what it takes.
Well, I'm saying though, no, don't make, we're not even.
She's not the one saying that y'all owe this money. I mean, now she is. I just want you to know, she's not the one that found this money. She would still be looking for it right now. I hate to be.
Yeah, but it may.
That is.
Well, so I bounced around that piece of this for about ten minutes, was waiting for somebody to fess up to that. Cause I heard the same thing.
Yes.
I don't know. But then that was my concern. We went five months before we figured it out. And initially what you said was she was sick and we had some illness, but sick or not, she wasn't gonna.
This is not the first.
That role was not gonna do it. And I'm just, I have zero confidence in anything. But anyway, that's something for us to work out in.
This is the second time this has happened.
This is Janay. She is our money.
My time was the first time. We called it the first time.
When was that?
I can look back and see, but we called it the first time. Um, but the way that those reports are ran, we're never gonna be able to catch on all of it. We don't look at the date ranges. We look at, we add together all the taxes that were collected and we make sure that, um, the deposit is what the tax collection reports that it should be deposited. That's all we look at, I guess. We just happened this first time to look at the dates when we were inputting into our spreadsheets. And I called her and I said, y'all have an overlapping dates. Does that mean that's an overpayment? And she, she got off the phone with me and looked at it and it was and we had to pay it back. So this is actually the second time.
That must have been when court, he was talking about, that was before.
No, that wasn't.
You what?
That was, so what, do you have any, have you any idea what it was?
It was within the last two year, within maybe off in the last year. Probably the last two years.
But it's, it, I don't know, we're simplified. It's a, it's a fairly simple process. You have a debit column and you have a credit column. And when they don't match at the end of the day, you should do it real time. I, hell, I got a computer. I can make an Excel spreadsheet that'll do that for me.
So, so in January, when that overpayment, when it was made, that was December of taxes.
No, it was January taxes.
Some of them were, no, some of them were made weekly during January. And then Melissa had cut the one, the two checks on the thirty-first.
January thirty-first.
Uh, Tracy come back and cut the other two in February. I think February twelfth.
But wouldn't that mean that the money they received wouldn't agree with the dispersal on the report?
Yeah.
You're talking about the reports that we got?
I don't know.
I'll go up report you.
She's supposed to.
I'll go get it. That's it.
So that's what they, they said, yeah, those reports.
So, so if they pull their report for a date range this to this date, it's gonna tell them, okay, they should have collected, collected this much taxes. But it, it's never going, it's always going to balance. You have to check the dates because then if you pull it from this date to this date, you should have collected this much taxes. So it's, it's always going to balance as far as the dates are.
You're just looking at the whole number and not what.
Yeah, but, but if you are not making sure that you have already paid for those dates and you're starting the start date here and the end date here, then that's an overlap at your dates.
Yes.
But the report itself is gonna be correct and the deposit itself is gonna be correct according to the report. But if you said from here to here, it should be this much money, she probably thinks money they all match. So that's why on our end, it's almost gonna never get called because the reports are always gonna match. But the date range is filled. Well, now.
That's the same thing with us. And you're telling us what we check. That's how we, our reports are the same and it's the same as that, what she's saying.
So what's the solution to that? What are the dates? What are we doing daily and what are we doing that where your, your taxes?
Coming in and what's coming out, yes.
Do you know?
She has a spreadsheet created that we're, we've got an Excel spreadsheet. Dawn is on it like, they send reports to her daily now. When all this come out, I'm like, we, I went to Melissa or I went to the, sent an email saying that we need it daily. And when I told the judge, from now on, the tax dollars will be paid out weekly, not monthly. Because right now, Newton County has not been paid since her July's taxes on because of all of this, all of ours is, we haven't yet. And I'm like you, if you haven't, she hasn't paid our taxes, we should get penalties and interest paid to the county for that back taxes. I mean, I, I feel the same as you.
I, I understand that completely because I'm the tax, I'm the tax code. So that's.
Yes, she paid it to the.
But I'm just saying, to, to be paid, so the county, we pay penalties and additional taxes.
Well, again, I, I don't think we're gonna solve it. And that's not weird. We just wanted to hear that piece. I, I really wanted to understand, yes.
But going forward, Janay, from your standpoint, what would be best for you? Would it be to have a daily account or when they deposit us or send us a check? Do y'all do it? So, okay, yeah, we got this and this for these dates and then this is for these dates. Would that help you any?
I think that how it's always been done is we get paid monthly until it reaches the point of, um, and I wanna say it's coming up, uh, right around the time that the bulk of the taxes are collected. And then it's weekly. And I usually send a letter and I say, and it's, I have to send a letter and request that we get weekly payments instead of this bulk of taxes collected during those months. And then after that, like summer months and all of that, when it kind of trickles down, it's monthly after that. And so I don't think, I don't think that there's any way to help me. We're just gonna be more cognizant of the dates. You know, cause it, cause if the money balances with the report and the report balances with the money, then we don't really, I mean, we're, we're good. All of our stuff balanced. I mean, we've balanced all of our months, um, but we do. All of our stuff balanced, I mean, we've balanced all of our months, um, but we do owe the money, because it, it was a, a day to overlap.
You confirmed that, was it?
Uh, confirm, yes, and it, it was the same principle that was done the last time.
And then we can, we can include her in our calls on what we wanna do going forward, you know?
And I will say, this was with our external auditor the last time that this happened, and they said, absolutely, pay them the money back, you know, it's not our money, it's not, you know, so, I mean, they were okay with us saying, here's, here's the money back, it's not actually our money.
So we just wanna make sure that y'all satisfy your auditors, that way when our external auditors come in, we can satisfy them. You know, that way, everybody's got to follow the.
Now, we gotta say, is he getting granted, right?
Uh, we can pay, we can make the payments that way, we could have made it that.
Is Gray gonna get his paycheck this month? Pick on me, I just made.
Well, he uses it as far as the month, he's got whiskey and firelight. He's part of the government, man.
So we got it, we're, we can do it and still.
And, and, and our auditors understand, our, our auditors are okay with the documentation that was sent over.
They were?
Yes.
So they did have the documentation, once you get it.
Yeah, again.
It, it took them a while to understand, you know, you know, the, the payments were the same, but then when I seen the checks, you know, and I, I seen the payment, the day overlapped, the one check was fifty-nine, the one was eleven, and the next one was six hundred and something thousand. So, and, and I could easily see how that, you know, totally went through.
I'm just baffled at such a, a a non-automated process anyway. The fact that it's pencil and paper, big cheap tablet, look to it, kinda bored me a little bit. But, uh, I mean, it is, we got, we got, I, I get it, but, um.
Well, as you were, software costs a lot of money.
Yes.
And we do have a version of Harris Government, uh, and we're looking at, uh, adding to it as far as some of that. Updating the software, but Harris Government, uh, poses a lot of buy another entity, so they're not actually updating that software, they're kinda letting it die out. So the county does have to get another tech software. So, it wouldn't Harris Government have got? We've got a lot of different software companies for the county, they're all expensive.
Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and, and roll back up to the, the motion, we'll call that was our, our, pretty much our public comment, so, um, we'll go back to the initial, so discuss and take possible actions, this is an action item. Discuss and take possible actions to approve repayment to Newton County for tax overpayment.
I'm open to discuss and take possible action to approve repayment to Newton County for tax overpayment.
That's it.
Okay, so one last chance, if we have any more questions, we're good, Janay, we can afford it. Um, I, I'd really like for y'all to circle around and find out if our current structure is what we wanna maintain, if we have other options. Uh, into the day, as far as I'm concerned, whatever's best for you, wherever, however you think it makes the most sense, I'm, I'm pretty sure you'll find we're all aligned with it as well, so just let us know what, what we need to do to try to avoid this again, so, uh. Alright, if we have no more questions, all in favor? Um, does anybody see any, no close session? If I leave this to our final, um, briefing, so we got one last, uh, option there, option three.
I made the motion of, John.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all, just appreciate you coming out, I, I didn't mean to, the, I didn't mean to really pass, but I'm a little frustrated. I know it's not, and it's not pointed at anybody in here at all.
I know, I know, it's just frustrating, but I just wanna say, you know.